Good evening and welcome to the Thousand Oaks City Council Meeting for April 13th. Councilmember Al Adam, would you please lead us off in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
Yes, thank you Mayor. You place your hand over your hearts and we'll begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Adam.
I'm here.
Councilmember Jones.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Protem Engler.
Here.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña.
Present, thank you for that. We will go straight to item number five and our city manager Drew Powers for the latest update on the COVID-19 pandemic. Good evening.
Good evening Mayor Bill De La Peña and City Council and the community. Just a brief update this evening, want to focus it on a couple of fronts. First vaccinations, progress continues to be made as we now sit at just about 30% of the 16 and up population in Ventura County being fully vaccinated with over 331,000 first doses administered and 190,000 second doses administered. We released some information last week about as progress continues to be made and the test positivity rate continues to be relatively low. Today for instance was around 35 new cases. That said, we do have cases that are continuing to occur, some even within our workforce. And we are preparing to reopen in-person services. As a reminder to the council and to the community, we have been open throughout the pandemic, but we will be focusing on a return to in-person services in two key areas and that is at our libraries, which beginning on the 21st of April will have in-person services available from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. on Wednesdays and Fridays and 1 to 4 on Sundays. There will be some limitations obviously to that, you'll experience a little bit of a different flow as you come into the library, but we'll be releasing some videos to just let folks know what to expect there. That's beginning on April 21st, which is next week. Our curbside virtual services will continue for the time being and as we move further and further down the line, we'll be modifying those services and those hours as we go forward. But initially, we know we have strong demand for both or we have strong demand for virtual services to continue and we'll see what demand looks like for in-person and adjust accordingly. At City Hall, we have been open for appointment-based services, we'll be shifting to having our customer counters open to walk-in traffic from 9 to 11. We are experiencing really significant volumes, especially in our community development and planning counter, a lot of folks that spend a lot of time at home over the last year are doing a tremendous amount of remodeling and adding pools and other elements to their homes and so we are seeing a really heavy volume at our counters. So I think it's important for everyone to recognize we're going to do our best to process all those, but the volumes are very significant right now. Finally, VenturaCountyRecovers.org is the spot to go for the latest information from the county and public health officials on getting a vaccination appointment, questions that may come up, information on new cases, VenturaCountyRecovers.org. That concludes my update for this evening.
Thank you very much. We will now go to John Brooks and John Brooks is our Senior Sustainability Analyst and as we do every year, Thousand Oaks will celebrate our commitment to preserving a clean and healthy environment as well as the important role that trees play in that commitment by proclaiming April 22nd Arbor Earth Day. Of course, we are so proud that this is our 2023 consecutive year that Thousand Oaks has been named Tree City USA and Mr. Brooks will join us to provide an update on the city's climate action plan and here is the proclamation by the way. Good evening, Mr. Brooks.
Historically, the city celebrated Arbor Earth Day with a fun, family-friendly event that showcased various sustainability practices that families could incorporate into their daily lives. Unfortunately, that's not possible this year. However, the theme of this year's Earth Day is Restore Our Earth and the public has an opportunity to fully embrace that theme by participating in the development of the city's first climate and environmental action plan. Development of a climate action plan was selected by the public as a top 10 priority during the Vision 2064 community planning process. In this past January, the city council directed staff to develop a plan that exceeds the state goals of reducing greenhouse gases 40% by 2030 and 80% by 2050 over our 2010 baseline year. At our next Climate Action Plan Stakeholder Meeting on April 28th, we will be discussing water, solid waste, recycling, as well as quality of life issues and the public is invited to share their thoughts on these issues as well. And in June, there will be a public meeting to discuss and refine the potential strategies to include in the draft Climate Action Plan to meet the council's direction and we hope to be back to council with the final plan at the end of this year. We encourage everyone to visit www.tokes.org/climateaction to find out more or to register for the events. Thank you and Happy Earth Day.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks and indeed Happy Earth Day. Next, I would like to welcome Denise Belko and along with her husband David Belko. The two are wonderful ambassadors of Donate Life and have been for a number of years. Donate Life is the nonprofit organ and tissue donor registry dedicated to saving the lives of thousands of Californians awaiting life-saving transplants. The Belko family of Newberry Park became involved in organ donor advocacy after their son Michael, at the age of 20, saved the lives of eight people or improved the lives of eight people through organ donation. The city council encourages Thousand Oaks residents to participate in the Donate Life California donor registry and we are therefore proclaiming the month of April as DMV Donate Life California Month. And this is normally turned over and presented to the Belko family every year for the last, I believe, seven years or so. We're doing it virtually now. Hi Denise and hi David, waving at you and hope that you both are doing great and not sure if you wanted to say a few words as well.
We just want to say thank you so much for supporting Donate Life and for supporting our family and we really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your advocacy and I know Mayor Protem Engler also participated in this year's virtual coffee, so we even made a video, the two of us for Donate Life for their campaign, so I just wanted you to know, thank you for your advocacy and support for this very important issue.
Thank you so much.
All right, and with that, we will go to public comments. Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council. Thank you. We will now go to John Brooks and John Brooks is our Senior Sustainability Analyst and as we do every year, Thousand Oaks will celebrate our commitment to preserving a clean and healthy environment as well as the important role that trees play in that commitment by proclaiming April 22nd Arbor Earth Day. Of course, we are so proud that this is our 2023 consecutive year that Thousand Oaks has been named Tree City USA and Mr. Brooks will join us to provide an update on the city's climate action plan and here is the proclamation by the way. Good evening, Mr. Brooks.
Historically, the city celebrated Arbor Earth Day with a fun, family-friendly event that showcased various sustainability practices that families could incorporate into their daily lives. Unfortunately, that's not possible this year. However, the theme of this year's Earth Day is Restore Our Earth and the public has an opportunity to fully embrace that theme by participating in the development of the city's first climate and environmental action plan. Development of a climate action plan was selected by the public as a top 10 priority during the Vision 2064 community planning process. In this past January, the city council directed staff to develop a plan that exceeds the state goals of reducing greenhouse gases 40% by 2030 and 80% by 2050 over our 2010 baseline year. At our next Climate Action Plan Stakeholder Meeting on April 28th, we will be discussing water, solid waste, recycling, as well as quality of life issues and the public is invited to share their thoughts on these issues as well. And in June, there will be a public meeting to discuss and refine the potential strategies to include in the draft Climate Action Plan to meet the council's direction and we hope to be back to council with the final plan at the end of this year. We encourage everyone to visit www.tokes.org/climateaction to find out more or to register for the events. Thank you and Happy Earth Day.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks and indeed Happy Earth Day. Next, I would like to welcome Denise Belko and along with her husband David Belko. The two are wonderful ambassadors of Donate Life and have been for a number of years. Donate Life is the nonprofit organ and tissue donor registry dedicated to saving the lives of thousands of Californians awaiting life-saving transplants. The Belko family of Newberry Park became involved in organ donor advocacy after their son Michael, at the age of 20, saved the lives of eight people or improved the lives of eight people through organ donation. The city council encourages Thousand Oaks residents to participate in the Donate Life California donor registry and we are therefore proclaiming the month of April as DMV Donate Life California Month. And this is normally turned over and presented to the Belko family every year for the last, I believe, seven years or so. We're doing it virtually now. Hi Denise and hi David, waving at you and hope that you both are doing great and not sure if you wanted to say a few words as well.
We just want to say thank you so much for supporting Donate Life and for supporting our family and we really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your advocacy and I know Mayor Protem Engler also participated in this year's virtual coffee, so we even made a video, the two of us for Donate Life for their campaign, so I just wanted you to know, thank you for your advocacy and support for this very important issue.
Thank you so much.
All right, and with that, we will go to public comments. Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council. Thank you. We will now go to John Brooks and John Brooks is our Senior Sustainability Analyst and as we do every year, Thousand Oaks will celebrate our commitment to preserving a clean and healthy environment as well as the important role that trees play in that commitment by proclaiming April 22nd Arbor Earth Day. Of course, we are so proud that this is our 2023 consecutive year that Thousand Oaks has been named Tree City USA and Mr. Brooks will join us to provide an update on the city's climate action plan and here is the proclamation by the way. Good evening, Mr. Brooks.
Historically, the city celebrated Arbor Earth Day with a fun, family-friendly event that showcased various sustainability practices that families could incorporate into their daily lives. Unfortunately, that's not possible this year. However, the theme of this year's Earth Day is Restore Our Earth and the public has an opportunity to fully embrace that theme by participating in the development of the city's first climate and environmental action plan. Development of a climate action plan was selected by the public as a top 10 priority during the Vision 2064 community planning process. In this past January, the city council directed staff to develop a plan that exceeds the state goals of reducing greenhouse gases 40% by 2030 and 80% by 2050 over our 2010 baseline year. At our next Climate Action Plan Stakeholder Meeting on April 28th, we will be discussing water, solid waste, recycling, as well as quality of life issues and the public is invited to share their thoughts on these issues as well. And in June, there will be a public meeting to discuss and refine the potential strategies to include in the draft Climate Action Plan to meet the council's direction and we hope to be back to council with the final plan at the end of this year. We encourage everyone to visit www.tokes.org/climateaction to find out more or to register for the events. Thank you and Happy Earth Day.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks and indeed Happy Earth Day. Next, I would like to welcome Denise Belko and along with her husband David Belko. The two are wonderful ambassadors of Donate Life and have been for a number of years. Donate Life is the nonprofit organ and tissue donor registry dedicated to saving the lives of thousands of Californians awaiting life-saving transplants. The Belko family of Newberry Park became involved in organ donor advocacy after their son Michael, at the age of 20, saved the lives of eight people or improved the lives of eight people through organ donation. The city council encourages Thousand Oaks residents to participate in the Donate Life California donor registry and we are therefore proclaiming the month of April as DMV Donate Life California Month. And this is normally turned over and presented to the Belko family every year for the last, I believe, seven years or so. We're doing it virtually now. Hi Denise and hi David, waving at you and hope that you both are doing great and not sure if you wanted to say a few words as well.
We just want to say thank you so much for supporting Donate Life and for supporting our family and we really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your advocacy and I know Mayor Protem Engler also participated in this year's virtual coffee, so we even made a video, the two of us for Donate Life for their campaign, so I just wanted you to know, thank you for your advocacy and support for this very important issue.
Thank you so much.
All right, and with that, we will go to public comments. Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council. Thank you. We will now go to John Brooks and John Brooks is our Senior Sustainability Analyst and as we do every year, Thousand Oaks will celebrate our commitment to preserving a clean and healthy environment as well as the important role that trees play in that commitment by proclaiming April 22nd Arbor Earth Day. Of course, we are so proud that this is our 2023 consecutive year that Thousand Oaks has been named Tree City USA and Mr. Brooks will join us to provide an update on the city's climate action plan and here is the proclamation by the way. Good evening, Mr. Brooks.
Historically, the city celebrated Arbor Earth Day with a fun, family-friendly event that showcased various sustainability practices that families could incorporate into their daily lives. Unfortunately, that's not possible this year. However, the theme of this year's Earth Day is Restore Our Earth and the public has an opportunity to fully embrace that theme by participating in the development of the city's first climate and environmental action plan. Development of a climate action plan was selected by the public as a top 10 priority during the Vision 2064 community planning process. In this past January, the city council directed staff to develop a plan that exceeds the state goals of reducing greenhouse gases 40% by 2030 and 80% by 2050 over our 2010 baseline year. At our next Climate Action Plan Stakeholder Meeting on April 28th, we will be discussing water, solid waste, recycling, as well as quality of life issues and the public is invited to share their thoughts on these issues as well. And in June, there will be a public meeting to discuss and refine the potential strategies to include in the draft Climate Action Plan to meet the council's direction and we hope to be back to council with the final plan at the end of this year. We encourage everyone to visit www.tokes.org/climateaction to find out more or to register for the events. Thank you and Happy Earth Day.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks and indeed Happy Earth Day. Next, I would like to welcome Denise Belko and along with her husband David Belko. The two are wonderful ambassadors of Donate Life and have been for a number of years. Donate Life is the nonprofit organ and tissue donor registry dedicated to saving the lives of thousands of Californians awaiting life-saving transplants. The Belko family of Newberry Park became involved in organ donor advocacy after their son Michael, at the age of 20, saved the lives of eight people or improved the lives of eight people through organ donation. The city council encourages Thousand Oaks residents to participate in the Donate Life California donor registry and we are therefore proclaiming the month of April as DMV Donate Life California Month. And this is normally turned over and presented to the Belko family every year for the last, I believe, seven years or so. We're doing it virtually now. Hi Denise and hi David, waving at you and hope that you both are doing great and not sure if you wanted to say a few words as well.
We just want to say thank you so much for supporting Donate Life and for supporting our family and we really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your advocacy and I know Mayor Protem Engler also participated in this year's virtual coffee, so we even made a video, the two of us for Donate Life for their campaign, so I just wanted you to know, thank you for your advocacy and support for this very important issue.
Thank you so much.
All right, and with that, we will go to public comments. Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the city council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council. That said, we do have cases that are continuing to occur, some even within our workforce. And we are preparing to reopen in-person services. As a reminder to the council and to the community, we have been open throughout the pandemic, but we will be focusing on a return to in-person services in two key areas, and that is at our libraries, which beginning on the 21st of April will have in-person services available from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Wednesdays and Fridays and 1:00 to 4:00 on Sundays. There will be some limitations obviously to that. You'll experience a little bit of a different flow as you come into the library, but we'll be releasing some videos to just let folks know what to expect there. That's beginning on April the 21st, which is next week. Our curbside virtual services will continue for the time being and as we move further and further down the line, we'll be modifying those services and those hours as we go forward. But initially, we know we have strong demand for both or we have strong demand for virtual services to continue and we'll see what demand looks like for in-person and adjust accordingly. At City Hall, we have been open for appointment-based services. We'll be shifting to having our customer counters open to walk-in traffic from 9:00 to 11:00. We are experiencing really significant volumes, especially in our community development and planning counter. A lot of folks that spent a lot of time at home over the last year were doing a tremendous amount of remodeling and adding pools and other elements to their homes. And so we are seeing a really heavy volume at our counters. So I think it's important for everyone to recognize we're going to do our best to process all those, but the volumes are very significant right now. Finally, VenturaCountyRecovers.org is the spot to go for the latest information from the county and public health officials on getting a vaccination appointment, questions that may come up, information on new cases, VenturaCountyRecovers.org. That concludes my update for this evening.
Thank you very much. We will now go to John Brooks and John Brooks is our Senior Sustainability Analyst. And as we do every year, Thousand Oaks will celebrate our commitment to preserving a clean and healthy environment as well as the important role that trees play in that commitment by proclaiming April 22nd Arbor Earth Day. Of course, we are so proud that this is our 2030 consecutive year that Thousand Oaks has been named Tree City USA. And Mr. Brooks will join us to provide an update on the city's climate action plan. And here is the proclamation, by the way. Good evening, Mr. Brooks.
Historically, the city's celebrated Arbor Earth Day with a fun, family-friendly event that showcased various sustainability practices that families could incorporate into their daily lives. Unfortunately, that's not possible this year. However, the theme of this year's Earth Day is Restore Our Earth. And the public has an opportunity to fully embrace that theme by participating in the development of the city's first climate and environmental action plan. Development of a climate action plan was selected by the public as a top 10 priority during the Vision 2064 Community Planning Process. In this past January, the City Council directed staff to develop a plan that exceeds the state goals of reducing greenhouse gases 40% by 2030 and 80% by 2050 over our 2010 baseline year. At our next Climate Action Plan Stakeholder Meeting on April 28th, we will be discussing water, solid waste, recycling, as well as quality of life issues. And the public is invited to share their thoughts on these issues as well. And in June, there will be a public meeting to discuss and refine the potential strategies to include in the draft Climate Action Plan to meet the council's direction. And we hope to be back to council with the final plan at the end of this year. We encourage everyone to visit www.tokes.org/climateaction to find out more or to register for the events. Thank you and Happy Earth Day.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks, and indeed Happy Earth Day. Next, I would like to welcome Denise Belko and along with her husband David Belko. The two are wonderful ambassadors of Donate Life and have been for a number of years. Donate Life is the nonprofit organ and tissue donor registry dedicated to saving the lives of thousands of Californians awaiting life-saving transplants. The Belko family of Newberry Park became involved in organ donor advocacy after their son Michael, at the age of 20, saved the lives of eight people or improved the lives of eight people through organ donation. The City Council encourages Thousand Oaks residents to participate in the Donate Life California Donor Registry, and we are therefore proclaiming the month of April as DMV Donate Life California Month. And this is normally turned over and presented to the Belko family every year for the last, I believe, seven years or so. We're doing it virtually now. Hi Denise and hi David. Waving at you and hope that you both are doing great and not sure if you wanted to say a few words as well.
We just want to say thank you so much for supporting Donate Life and for supporting our family and we really appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your advocacy and I know Mayor Protem Engler also participated in this year's virtual coffee. So we even made a video, the two of us, for Donate Life for their campaign. So I just wanted you to know, thank you for your advocacy and support for this very important issue.
Thank you so much.
All right, and with that, we will go to public comments. Madam Clerk.
This is a time and place for public comments for those wishing to address the City Council regarding items on the agenda or on a subject within the city's jurisdiction. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Please remain muted until the mayor calls your name. If you need Spanish translation or would like to speak in Spanish, please call 805-449-2152. Si necesita tu acto en el español o lo que estaria hablando en español, por favor llame al 805 449 21 52. Under state law, public comment matters may not be considered by the council unless listed on the agenda, but may be referred to the city manager for administrative follow-up. 22 individuals have requested to speak and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. All right, and we have our first speaker. I'm going to mention the first three. And for the speakers to please mention your city of residence if you can. First, we have Susan Soy, followed by Brooke Foxworthy, and then Dr. Rady. Good evening.
Good evening Mayor Bill de la Peña and Mayor Protem Engler and council members. My name is Susan Soy and I am a resident of Thousand Oaks. And I'm here today during National Volunteer Appreciation Month to tell you about the all-volunteer organization that I belong to, the Friends of the Thousand Oaks Library. The Friends have a mission to support the Thousand Oaks Library. We are the Booster Club. We promote learning, literacy, and cultural knowledge, and we do this through fundraising. The monies we raise go to the library and are used to enhance collections and services. We also bring awareness to the community about the library. The Friends have over 300 members and 61 active volunteers. In 2020, we provided 8,175 volunteer hours of service while being safe following COVID guidelines. Many of us volunteered entirely from home. We salute our volunteers and how they have persevered to serve the community through COVID times. I want to highlight two programs that we have. When the Thousand Oaks and Newberry Park libraries closed, the Friends bookshops inside the libraries closed, and of course, these were revenue-generating operations for us. Our volunteers, though, continued to sell books through eBay, Amazon Sales, and developed a COVID-safe donations program so that online sales could continue and even expand into an additional online bookshop called Good Friends Good Books. The items in this online store are for sale at low prices, most of them less than $4. The revenues from the Friends' online bookshops all go to the library. Our dedicated volunteers collect donated books, CDs, DVDs, and even puzzles from people in the community. They sort the donations, price the items, list them in the online bookshops, publicize the shops, account for the sales revenues, and deliver the items sold to customers, all using safe, COVID-safe curbside pickup. In the second example, we have the Community Donations Program operated by the Friends. In this program, Friends volunteer to work with groups like Westminster Clinic, the Boys and Girls Clubs, the Park District, Safe Passages, Adelante, Community Dodd, and For the Troops to provide books free of charge. These books are handpicked from our donations to match the needs of the groups and then boxed carefully and delivered by our volunteers to the organizations.
Ms. Soy.
Using COVID-safe guidelines.
Was that your last sentence? So you can finish up. I just wanted to...
I just want to thank you very much for allowing me to speak this evening. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Appreciate that. Next up, we have Brooke Foxworthy, followed by John Rady, and then Mrs. Stroker.
Good evening, council members. My name is Brooke Foxworthy. My name is Brooke Foxworthy and I am a 12-year resident of Thousand Oaks, where my husband and I are raising three kids here. My statements this evening are centering around last week's conversations that came to us from the 805 Resistance Organization. And I just would have some questions. If I was to go to my employer and ask to create a job or a committee, I would need to be accountable for some very specific outcomes. And I would want to know how they would plan on achieving these outcomes that they are asking to create such an office. The idea that they think there is this much racism in our community, I find pretty appalling, and especially when there just aren't any facts to back it up. According to our sheriff, since 2018, there have been three hate crimes in three years. If we were to spend money and funds creating such an office, I would like to know what they'd like the outcome to be, and I would like some concrete examples of what it is they are trying to achieve in our school system and in our community. The idea that there is not an opportunity for everybody seems quite disproportionate when you look around and see the amazing opportunities that are in our community, from Indians and Asians, Nigerian community that outperforms all of those in our community. Is their premise even accurate? What they brought to our city council last week, I think, would be some questions I would like you guys to entertain. I think they've done a lot to undermine their entire argument when they have nothing to back up these racist claims from our wonderful community. And it would be not a good use of our time and money if we didn't entertain what exactly they were even trying to achieve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Rady, followed by Mrs. Stroker, and then Babette Preciado.
Thank you, council members. I just wanted to speak briefly. Brooke talked a lot about what my topic was going to be, but I just wanted to bring up a couple of quick items and say, you know, again, I agree with her that there's basically no empirical evidence to support that Thousand Oaks and our city government are systemically racist. And it is rather offensive to hear that when because my wife and I have lived here for 20 years, raised our children here, and this is specifically, we chose this area to raise our children in because of the lack of racism and intolerance that we definitely did our research on this community. And that was 20 years ago. You know, currently, there is already a system in place and it's part of the California Constitution, as you're aware, and it's Prop 209. It's the California Civil Rights Initiative. And so there's already, it's written into our constitution on the state level, and therefore, to create another commission, put the burden, the financial burden on the taxpayers of Thousand Oaks, I find that there's just really no real basis for that. And, you know, and if, you know, if somebody really feels that they have been, you know, their rights have been violated, there's already a means for them to pursue that in a legal manner outside of our city. So, and then the data that Brooke displayed. But basically, I think the whole premise that we believe in, that's been a part of our life for 20 years, is that it's creating opportunity, equality of opportunity, not the equality of outcome. And I think what we see sometimes is, excuse me, is that there's kind of a lean towards, well, we need to create equality of outcome. And that's just not, that's just not part of the human experience. We all have to struggle and fight and go out there and do our best and really, you know, really give it, you know, our whole effort. And sometimes we fail. And that's just, that's just how things work. So I just hope that you take a real hard look at what the proposal is, see if there is that empirical evidence. I have not been able to find that. And that the right decision we made, that's what's best for all of the citizens of Thousand Oaks. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Mrs. Stroker, and I believe that the previous residents are residents of Thousand Oaks. Good evening. Do we have Mrs. Stroker on the phone of Somis? No, then we will go to the next one via video, Babette Preciado of Newberry Park.
Hello?
Yes, is this Babette?
This is me. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, again, my name is Babette Preciado. I live in Newberry Park. I have been in Caneo Valley now for about 30 years. I came into this community because I was born in Oxnard. I'm a first-generation Hispanic. And I was very concerned last week about hearing them try to bring equity into Thousand Oaks. And I have to tell you, I have been blessed with an incredible life here in Thousand Oaks. I've raised my son. My husband managed all of my son's Little League teams. I was the team mom. I have not once in the entire time I have been in the Caneo Valley, been in Ventura County, I have never been a victim of racism. We are a loving community in Ventura County. And for a group of people to try to bring racism into our community, into our environment, is just absolutely appalling. The one thing I have noticed is you have minorities like Hispanics or blacks, I'm just going to put it out there, that they go to white people and they tell you, "You are racist. You're a white supremacist." That is ridiculous. I have never, ever heard such manure in my entire life. And I want you, as our city council, we're behind you. I want you to have the strength to know it is okay to push back and tell them, "No." Portland, I was in there 15 years ago. I believe they are trying to do what they did in Portland and in Seattle. They are trying to bring that hate, that problem, that destroy, what has destroyed their environments. They are trying to bring us down because our community is the number one in the entire United States, followed by Simi. They are going to try to bring down our communities. Again, I am Hispanic. I am first generation. I have been here my entire life. My father was born in Mexico and I just have not seen it. I have, believe it or not, I was taught that I could be the President of the United States. Now, mind you, I am going to be 56 years old. My family was ahead of the times. No woman was being taught that they could be President of the United States. So again, my family embraced this country. My father told me to be proud because I was Hispanic, but to be prouder because I was an American. And I have to tell you, I am proud of our country. We are not a racist country. We embrace so many people. We are a melting pot. And please do not let these extremists ruin our community. There is just not a problem with race in our community. Thank you for listening to me and please be brave against these radicals. It is no, it is not, it's not a coincidence that the lady from Black Lives Matter just moved into Topanga. They really are getting ready to give us a lot of trouble and we have to stand strong as a community.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for your...
Thank you. Your time is up. Sorry. But next up, we have Mrs. Stroker, followed by Suzanne Strong, and then Denise Pedro. Mrs. Stroker, are you back? Can you unmute yourself? All right, we will go to Suzanne Strong via video. Good evening. Followed by Denise Pedro, and we will try to connect with Mrs. Stroker after that or in the meantime. Okay, so I am looking for Suzanne Strong. Is she there?
Can you hear me?
Suzanne?
I'm trying.
No, we hear you. Go ahead.
Oh, you do? Okay, great. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't realize that. My name is Suzanne Strong and I live in Thousand Oaks. And I'm here today also, as the other residents, are in response to the public comments that were made last week, City Council Meeting regarding an equity agenda. I also take offense at the inference that our community is racist. We may lack the diversity of other larger California cities. However, I think the United States as a whole is probably the least racist of many multicultural countries. And I frankly am tired. Well, let me start here. I'm proud of my city of Thousand Oaks. And I'm sure you would agree, everybody on this panel would agree, that the vast majority of us would all welcome all races and cultures into our community. And I'm tired of the political agendas and propaganda. I ask that you do not bow to outside pressure and say no to any special social justice commissions. And I thank you for your unwavering service. You do an awesome job. This is a wonderful community. I'd like to keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Denise Pedro. We don't have Denise. Okay, how about we try Marcelo Pasternak? Marcelo, are you there? All right, I saw, can you unmute yourself? There you go.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Hi. So hi, my name is Marcelo Pasternak. I'm originally from Argentina. Came to the United States in 2000 and started working at a restaurant called BJ's in Wounded Hills as a host. Didn't speak much English, but I, you know, I got enough English out there to seat people in their table. With the time, I moved myself up the ranks to Foot Runner and to work as an expo in the kitchen and to train other people. So one day, they asked me, "Would you like to train some people in Thousand Oaks that are opening a new store down in Westlake Boulevard?" And they're new, so they need somebody that knows the job to help them. So I came one night, all the way with my motorcycle to help out. And it was cold and rainy that night. And I remember the people that I was working with didn't want me to drive home, so they asked me to stay in their house that night so I didn't have to, you know, be in the rain. And I'm an immigrant that spoke barely any English. And it was one of the best places that treated me, so I moved there. And I lived there for almost seven years. I went to Motorport College. I lived down in Hampshire. I still go there to the gym, the climbing gyms. I love this city. And I think if you guys give up to this social push that is going on in this country, people like me that ran away from this politics won't have a place to go anymore. So we ran away from these places and you guys are trying to implement the same policies in your city. So you camouflage everything as a social justice, but it really, it's unsocial and it's unjust. And it really affects the middle class and the people in your community, and it enriches a few. So don't let your community make it a beacon of light instead of let it be run by darkness. And whoever said, "Come on there," I know you guys heard it, that's very rude. And I hope it's not somebody in the council, but I appreciate your time and I hope you don't ruin your city like my politicians ruin my country. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Dan Weinens on the phone, followed by Sint via video. Is it Sint or Clint? Clint, okay. There's a little typo. Good evening. Looking for Dan Weinens. No, Dan. Clint, good evening.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Clint and I'm a renter here in Thousand Oaks, as well as a member of the Caneo Climate Coalition. Just yesterday, Scientific American published an article entitled, "We Are Living in a Climate Emergency and We're Going to Say So." The article said, quote, "This is a..." The article said, quote, "This is a statement of science, not politics." Thousands of scientists have said humanity faces a climate emergency. Why emergency? Because words matter. To preserve a livable planet, humanity must take action immediately. Failure to slash the amount of carbon dioxide in the atmosphere will make the extraordinary heat, storms, wildfires, and ice melt of 2020 routine and could render a significant portion of the Earth uninhabitable," end quote. The climate emergency is here, and we must think globally and act locally. I would urge those here tonight to listen to the latest episode of the Branching Out podcast from the Acorn. Kyle Jory and Ian Bradley interviewed Kat Selm, a member of the Caneo Climate Coalition. The interview is a great starting point for anyone wanting to get involved in working with our community to create a more sustainable city. You can also visit caneoclimat.org for more information. With Earth Day coming up on April 22nd, I'd like to remind everyone that every day should be Earth Day as we move headlong into a future where climate change will play a major role in our ability to sustain a healthy community. I would like to thank the Sustainability Division and the City of Thousand Oaks for all it has done to champion microgrids and solar power. The Climate and Environmental Action Plan meetings, also known as CEP meetings, have been invaluable. And I'd like to thank everyone involved for their work. The next CEP meeting is on April 28th, and anyone interested can register, register at t-oaks.org. Hope to see you there. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have on the phone Karen Martin, followed by Adam Haverstock and Anne Marie Winich. Ms. Martin, if you could unmute, we would be able to hear you. Karen Martin? There we go. Go ahead, please. Okay, we seem to.
For some kind, some kind of.
We need to go next to Adam Haverstock then via video, please. Good evening, Mr. Haverstock.
Traffic calming at Lennon and James. There was another wreck this weekend at the same place.
Okay, we're hearing someone that we're not supposed to hear. Adam Haverstock is next.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I am Adam Haverstock, Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, here to give you a monthly report. Uh, I'm going to start with some really great news from the tourism district. Caneo Valley Tourism has launched a travel stimulus program that we're calling Caneo Cash. And we are providing a $100 Visa gift card to travelers that are coming to Caneo Valley. Now, in order to qualify, they must book a two-night stay in one of our 16 tourism district hotels in the cities of Thousand Oaks or Gore Hills. And they apply for the gift card at our website, caneo.com. There is a link in the navigation bar at the top for the Caneo Cash program. And they receive a $100 gift card when they check in at their hotel. And travelers that are staying are eligible between this coming Monday, April 19th, and June 30th of 2021 for this program. This week, we launched our marketing of the program. It includes PR outreach. We did an email out to our contact list, and we're doing paid social media to do promotion for this. And we wanted to thank the city who contributed significant funding to support the travel stimulus program as well. And details of the program are available at caneo.com, which is the tourism district website. The chamber's regional economic forecast is coming up on Friday, April 30th. It is going to be an online event via Vimeo, and there is going to be an online networking portion prior to the event on Zoom. We're going to do networking in small groups before the event begins. Our keynote speaker is going to be Kuma Roberts from Arrowhead Consulting. And her topic is the business case for diversity, equity, and inclusion. We also have Dr. Matthew Fienep from the CLU Center for Economic Research and Forecasting, presenting the regional economic forecast. The networking portion is from 9:00 to 9:30 a.m., and the presentation, the presentations will be from 9:30 to 10:30. And that's on Friday, April 30th. All are welcome to attend, and tickets are available at caneochamber.org. And then finally, I wanted to mention the Principal for a Half Day Program. This event is coming up next Thursday, April 22nd, from 9:00 to 10:30 in the morning. It's a great collaboration between the Chamber of Commerce and the Caneo Valley Unified School District. Participants will be assigned to a CVUSD school, and they will get to shadow the school principal and get a campus tour. After all of the tours are completed, all of the participants are invited to a virtual recognition program via Zoom. And there will be remarks on the recognition program from CVUSD Superintendent Dr. Mark McLaughlin. This event is free to attend, but registration is required so we can assign attendees to schools. And registration closes this Friday. And registration is available on our website at caneochamber.org. And unless there are any questions, that concludes my comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, via video, we have Anne Marie Winich. I believe that is how the name is pronounced. I'm not quite sure. Followed by Sasha Epstein and Beverly Wertz.
Hello, can you hear me? Yeah?
Yes.
Okay, um, thank you. I'm Anne Marie Winich, and I, we are a family of five. We have been here for 10 years. And we're raising our three children here. We're very thankful to be in such a wonderful community of peace-loving, safety-loving, peace-filled people. And we want it to stay that way. There is no need for an equity commission here in Thousand Oaks. Until racism is blatantly an issue, we do not need to expand government. We do not need to fix something that's not broken. Those of us that are paying taxes can tell you that we are very thankful to be here in this safe community, and we do not need to be creating problems that we don't already have. All people, all diverse nationalities, income levels, disabilities, abilities are welcome to all events, meetings, community buildings here in Thousand Oaks. Um, and there is, I, I have not seen in the 10 years that I've been here any situation where a group of people or a certain person has been eliminated or ostracized for their nationality, their income level, or anything. Um, I, I appreciate the all-inclusive, um, community that we have here. This is an effort from the outside. I am so offended that people are being paid to come in from the outside to tell our city what's best for us. The only, the people that, that would know what's best for us are the ones that are living here and are paying our taxes. And as was said earlier, our sheriff reports that there's only been three hate crimes in three years. Um, why are we trying to create a problem that we do not have? Um, and as was also explained before, we already have Prop 209, the California Civil Rights Initiative. There's already a vehicle through which they can resolve their issues. Where is the empirical evidence for this? I urge the city council to listen to our community, our current tax-paying residents, those that live here as to what we need. We are a diverse community, representing all income levels, several nationalities. And I ask that you honor all of our residents by not allowing the hate of the social justice agenda to enter into our beautiful community. We already have justice here. Thank you so much, City Council, for all that you do.
Thank you. Next, we have Sasha Epstein, followed by Beverly Wertz, and then Susan Thee. Looking for Sasha Epstein or Epstein?
Hey folks, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, for some reason, my video is not turning on, but I can, I can proceed without it, and hopefully it turns on. As, as mentioned, my name is Sasha Epstein, and my family and I, we've been residents of Newberry Park for the last three years. Before Newberry Park, we lived in LA, Los Angeles, California. And before that, I've actually lived in the Soviet Union, more specifically Ukraine, pre and post collapse of the communist rule. So, um, for the last three years, Thousand Oaks has been an incredible community for us. It's been an amazing place to live for my kids, for my wife. We developed a terrific network of friends. We discovered groups, activities for our kids and ourselves, and really enjoyed calling Ventura County our home. And needless to say, that's just a microcosm of the amazing opportunities that, that Thousand Oaks has given us. So we hold Thousand Oaks near and dear to our hearts and handsome here today. During last week's city council meeting, eight of five residents not only wrongfully perpetrated this unfounded ignorant lie that the U.S. is a systematically racist nation, but also claimed that Thousand Oaks is a city and a community is also somehow an offender. So they demanded Thousand Oaks pass this resolution, and I quote, "Resolution of Diversity, Inclusion, Equity of All Citizens to Further Battle, Quote, 'Systemic Racism and White Supremacy.'" The group provided no evidence of, quote, "Systemic Racism and White Supremacy" on any sort of national level, and they neglected to provide anything on the local level as well. And they made a lot of grandiose demands with a lot of buzzwords we hear commonly parroted by cultural Marxists in this day and age. And I'm, I'm going to read something from their petition, what they're demanding. And I, I'd like you to listen as well and just retort it as, as, as we go along. So they want T.O. Council to pass a recognition of passing of this resolution as a statement that acknowledges the existence of systemic racism, and it opposes it. I, I didn't know that need to be said. There's no evidence provided anywhere that there is systemic racism in the United States, and it's been commonly debunked by economists, researchers, invest, criminal investigators as well. Those numbers are not hard to find. You could look at the likes of Thomas Sowell, Coleman Hughes, Walter Williams, Larry Elder, among others. Even Wall Street Journal, which is very well, very left-leaning, completely denies that fact. They also want efforts to create an inclusion committee and mandate participation in anti-racist education training in city officers, employees, and staff. So I'm, I'm not entirely sure what the responsibilities of this inclusion committee will be, and also how much will it cost us as taxpayers. Is this really going to be a priority for us? They also want to develop a diversity, inclusion, equality programs to expand the understanding of cultural differences and the impacts of discrimination and so on. So I don't know what any of that means. There's no clear answers on what that, exactly what that means. But I do urge you to stand up to this group. Again, there's no empirical evidence of, quote unquote, "white supremacy" or anything like that affecting. And I mentioned I'm from the Soviet Union, and I've actually experienced systemic racism in the form of antisemitism while I lived there. And needless to say, for the last two decades, as I lived in the United States, I went from a very low socioeconomic status immigrant to, to a, a successful American. And I want to call Thousand Oaks my home. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Beverly Wertz, and then Susan A., followed by Lillian Teran.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, City Council Members. My name is Beverly Wertz, living in Newberry Park. I would like to start by saying I don't support outside hate groups spewing lies during these city council meetings. And I don't support the Social Justice Commission to come in to destroy our community and infect our city council with racism and hate. I urge you to make it mandatory to fill in on the questionnaire before speakers are allowed to be brought before you. Each speaker needs to show how many years they have lived in the Thousand Oaks area. And it should be mandatory to provide a valid address where they are currently living before allowed to speak, as opposed to remotely zooming from wherever and potentially, uh, anywhere, even cities like Portland, Oregon, or Seattle, Washington. It's obvious many of last week's speakers are not really Thousand Oaks residents. No one in the city council is a white supremacist. I am not a racist. I don't know what white privilege is. I never experienced it. I struggled like everyone else to get where I am today, just like all hard-working Americans, no matter what the color of your skin. I take offense to blanket allegations of racism based on my skin color, our Thousand Oaks values, and having a different opinion or belief. Their logic is devoid of hard evidence. And, um, the United States is the least racist of any multicultural nation, and Thousand Oaks stands as a beacon of light, guiding the way for other communities to follow. Our community has embraced multiple races and multiple cultures, and we peacefully coexist. We go to the same places of worship, the same grocery stores. Our kids go to the same schools. I have been a resident, a tax-paying resident of Thousand Oaks for over 10 years, my husband over 20. I voted you into office, and I stand by all of you. I want you to know you are supported. Do not vow to this outside pressure and agenda. Thank you for your unwavering service. We do not need a social justice equity commission. Remember that Californians spoke loud and clear in the last election, rejecting the attempt to repeal Proposition 209, which ensures people are not discriminated against or given preferential treatment for their race, sex, age, religious beliefs. That means me too. That means all of you. The council's time would be better spent on issues affecting our city, mainly the general plan, sore traffic issues, resuscitating the struggling businesses from the COVID lockdowns, and improving our public education. Requiring civics for our young people to learn what an exceptional republic our founding fathers created for this nation, and for the people to have God-given inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness right here in Thousand Oaks, California. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Susan A. via video. And then we have Lillian Teran, and followed by Leeann Holland. Is Susan A. with us? Yes, I see her. Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Susan Andaloro in Thousand Oaks. Um, I've spent a lot of time here, and I agree with the others that I have never seen not one ounce of racism. And I think that by bringing in commissions like that, you're actually going to divide the people more. And you're going to bring in things like what we're seeing in Oregon, uh, the start of riots, and a lot of things that I don't think any of us want to see in such an amazing town. Please spend the resources on something more important like 400%. There's a 400% increase in child suicide due to lockdowns. I think there are much more important things. And that's all I have to say today.
Thank you. Next, we have Lillian Teran, followed by Leeann Holland, and then Gina Libby.
Uh, good time to all of you. My name is Leeann Teran, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I own a house and I pay taxes. I'm president of la Comida Conejo. Our organization is part of a coalition of organizations that work together on issues of equity and inclusion in our city. We are Conejo Unido. Today, I would like to express all my gratitude to the city council for adopting a wide goal focused on equity and inclusion. I was happy to hear your remarks where you made a clear statement that Thousand Oaks is a place where all residents should feel valued and welcome. Placing this goal at the top of the list tells community members who have been marginalized that you see us. We matter, and we are important to our city. From the bottom of my heart, thank you so much. I'm looking forward to seeing the next steps that the city will take to realize this crucial goal. I know that I've been telling some stories in this meeting. That, by the way, that doesn't make me an extremist or radical. I was raised well, and I am proud of the person that I became. Today, I would like to share a happy story as well. I've been so many times the only Latina among white people while volunteering at my daughter's school or during community events. In the beginning, I had felt uncomfortable and out of my comfort zone, but a lot of wonderful people tried to make me feel welcome. I have met up so many good friends. When we first came to this country, I thought that I'm going to have family here. Right now, I can tell you that I have a big family because friends are the family that we choose. Next time that I throw a party, I will have a place big enough to invite all my family members. I'm very fortunate to have so many relatives in this city. That's why it is important to me to work together to create a more welcoming and inclusive community to everyone who calls Thousand Oaks home. Thank you so much for listening and for your time.
Thank you, Lillian. Leeann Holland, followed by Gina Libby and Arla Terrell.
Good evening, Mayor Bill de La Peña, council members and city staff. My name is Leeann Holland, and I live in Newberry Park. I've lived here since 2015. I am the leader of Thrive Caneo, and we are part of Conejo Unido, a coalition of organizations that works together on issues of equity and inclusion in our city. Tonight, I would like to express my gratitude to the city council for adopting a citywide goal focused on equity and inclusion. You have made a clear statement that Thousand Oaks is a place where all residents should feel valued and welcome. Placing this goal at the top of the list tells community members who have been marginalized that they matter and are important to our city. Thank you so much. Your leadership and public commitment on this issue are crucial because families like mine are looking to you to help remove barriers to access and to success for our loved ones. mine are looking to you to help remove barriers to access and to success for our loved ones. April is Autism Acceptance Month, and autistics, their friends, and families and allies across the nation are spreading the message that neurodiversity is a natural part of human diversity. Autism is an infinite spectrum of possibilities, and on social media, people are sharing a rainbow infinity symbol to represent that idea. For parents like me, we hope that the rest of the world can learn to accept and appreciate those on the spectrum who think and experience the world differently than most. Many are longing for a connection that they will never experience until the rest of us learn to open our arms and our hearts. Moving forward, Conejo Unido is eager to see the next steps that the city will take to make its new top goal a reality. Together, we can create a more welcoming and inclusive community for everyone who calls Thousand Oaks home. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. And neurodiversity is, of course, included in our new city goal. Vitaly important that we accept persons with neurodiversity and bring more awareness to that particular issue as well. Gina Libby, followed by Arla Terrell, and then finally Karen Martin, Dr. Karen Martin.
Thank you, Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you so much. I'm also calling today in response to the meeting last week, which I found so disheartening. The city council members at last week's meeting were bombarded with calls by social justice warriors that attempted to shame the council and our community. And what for? Because of the color of our skin, our values, and worst of all, having beliefs different from theirs. Blanket statements of racism because of color are the definition of racism. Facts do matter, and the United States of America is the least racist of any multicultural nation. Just look at our coins. Our money says it all. E pluribus unum, from many, one. Most Americans could care less about color. America boasts the greatest level of education and wealth for every minority group compared to any other nation in the world. And of very recent history, the American people elected our first black president in 2008, then re-elected him in 2012. Why? Because of the promise of hope and change. The message counted, not the color of the messenger. I acknowledge that there are absolutely disparities, and I would like to point folks in the direction of scholars such as Thomas Sowell, Robert Woodson, and Shelby Steele, all pioneers who lived through the civil rights movement, who have come to similar conclusions that many disparities are not because of racism, but because of decades-long poor policies that incentivize lack of school choice, fatherlessness, and other policies that do not at all serve minority communities. There could be nothing more racist than critical race theory, which defines people by their color and categories of victimhood. Can you imagine teaching your children that others are better or less than them because of color, and that they're either an oppressor or the oppressed because of their color? That's the message underlying racial equity, social justice, critical race theory, or other fanciful names disguising Marxist theories. I think it's very obvious that there's a purposeful divide being manufactured in this nation to progress an agenda. A very clear example of it is that the documentary Created Equal, Clarence Thomas, in his own words, was removed from streaming by Amazon during Black History Month. The equity elites actually canceled Justice Clarence Thomas. Why? Because he doesn't fit the narrative. Our young people have been indoctrinated to hate America while being robbed of our rich history.
Gina?
We have made mistakes, and we've made them right. We do it by empowering people, not shaming them and teaching victimhood. We support you and your courage. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That was our final speaker, actually. The others dropped off. So we will now go to the consent. Oh, I'm not sure whether the city manager wanted to add anything at all.
Nothing specific to add tonight, other than to just thank our first speaker was talking about Volunteer Appreciation Month. Obviously, our city is run on the backs of volunteers and numerous functions, from our theaters to our libraries to our VIPs, and so I just wanted to take a moment to thank them.
Wonderful, indeed. Thank you. We will now go to our consent calendar. Any questions of my council colleagues regarding consent calendar item number seven?
Madam Mayor?
Mr. Jones, go ahead.
Yes. I would like to switch item here. I'd like to discuss briefly item K.
Okay, item K. Is there another item that you wish to pull, Mr. Jones?
No, I'd be glad to move the balance of the consent calendar.
Very good. We have a motion to move the balance of the consent calendar. Please vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill de la Peña?
Yes. Mr. Jones, item number K.
That motion carries 5-0.
Just quickly, I noticed that the people that were not able to deliver on their bid that they made for the vows for $103,539. After they had to back out, then we signed with another company for $111,000. I'm wondering, are the people that made a valid bid for the contract liable for the difference between $103 and $111,000 to us?
Good evening, Councilmember Jones. This is Nader Hidari, the Deputy Public Works Director. I can help respond to that item. This was not a construction bid, so it was more of a material purchase, so there isn't the normal protections of bonds and so forth that would be in place if it was a full construction contract bid that would allow us to recover that loss between the first and the second bid. So that wasn't possible in this case. However, fortunately, in this case, that delta, that differential was quite small.
Did we suffer any damage financially or in any way as a result of not being able to rely as I thought we should have been on the $103,000 bid?
No, there was no impact other than that small cost differential to go to the second vendor for those items in question. And we're doing that to kind of protect ourselves schedule-wise, and we mutually parted with the first vendor, given that we recognized that they were going to have difficulty following through. So we wanted to go ahead and secure our order with the second vendor, who we've used before, actually, on the previous digester. So we feel confident about the new vendor going forward.
Yeah, I don't want to belabor this, but seems to me they must have signed a document guaranteeing the lower price. And it doesn't seem to me that's very equitable of them as business people to sign such an agreement. And I'm not aware of the language of the agreement, but I presume it was fairly, you know, stalwart or ironclad, whatever the word is. And I don't think that's very good business practice.
There are times, Councilmember Jones, where mistakes are made in bids, and so there's always a process to allow a bidder to remove itself from the bidding process. In construction contracts, it's a little bit different, and they actually post bid bonds. These were just for widgets, for lack of a better word. So in this case, we didn't detrimentally rely on them. They notified us pretty quickly, and that's why we're not, this isn't a new round. We were able to go immediately to the second bidder as if the first bidder didn't even submit a bid.
That's not a normal, in my opinion, that's not a good way to do business, but if that's the advice you're giving us tonight, I won't question it. I'll move the item K.
Thank you very much. We have a motion to approve item 7K. Please vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. We will now go to item number eight. And for that, since it is a public hearing, we will go back to the city clerk to open the public hearing.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, proposed collection of residential wastewater service charges on Ventura County's secured property tax roll. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. One individual has presented a speaker card pursuant to council standards. The speaker will have five minutes.
Thank you. And it will be our Revenue Operations Manager, Sherri Johnson, who will be providing the presentation. Good evening.
Thank you, and good evening. Thank you, Mayor Bill de la Peña and city council members. On February 9th, city council was presented with a department report to discuss the collection of single-family residential wastewater charges on the Ventura County Secured Property Tax Roll. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to receive public testimony, and this is tied upon changing our collection method of wastewater charges. Here's a summary of the proposed changes. It's important to note that tonight's discussion is not about a rate increase. This discussion is about a different way of paying for the same bill. Any future rate increases will still go through the normal public process and will remain subject to Prop 218 notification to affected property owners, and city council will still have authority over city rates. If tonight's discussion about single-family residential wastewater charges on county property taxes approved, then the city would no longer issue single-family residential wastewater service bills. Charges for wastewater services would be billed on the December 2021 and April 2022 property tax statements. These statements would include service charges from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th of 2022. Customers with city water service would continue to receive their regular bimonthly bill, but only with water service charges. Here's an image of the Ventura County Property Tax Bill. Wastewater service charges on the Ventura County Property Tax Bill would be listed as a separate line item charge with the city's phone number listed adjacent to that charge. For this upcoming fiscal year, July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, the annual amount for a single-family residential parcel located inside city limits is $359.40, and for parcels located outside city limits, the amount is $363.12. Property owners enrolled in the city's utility assistance program would continue to realize the reduced rate. Simply stated, these are the same rates we charge now. So there are approximately 36,500 residential wastewater accounts which would be affected. This includes townhomes, condominiums, and single-family residential connections. This change would not include apartments, mobile homes, commercial, multifamily residential, or industrial customers. The county of Ventura is anticipating a charge of 21 cents per parcel for each direct assessment, meaning this change would cost the city approximately $7,700 per year. For the county of Ventura to collect single-family residential wastewater service charges on behalf of the city, the city would need to provide data to the county, including the assessor's parcel number and the associated sewer service charge being levied on each property. A preliminary list of affected parcel numbers and amount of charge per parcel is available on the city's website and with our city clerk's department. So one of the main questions staff has received thus far is, why would we make this change? Changing from the current bimonthly wastewater charge bill collection method to one where these charges will be included on the county property tax invoice sent to property owners twice a year is good for ratepayers. It's less expensive than our current process. Staff time and resources allocated for billing in-house would be greatly reduced, and these cost savings would be considered as a part of our upcoming wastewater rate study. Simply stated, the wastewater fund and ultimately the customers we serve would directly benefit by lowering our expenses. Just to give us some context of the savings, the city would save over $70,000 a year in postage and printing material, and would also save over 3,200 hours in staff time spent administering bills, performing account maintenance, printing, stuffing, and mailing bills, and processing payments. Additionally, residents would benefit by no longer needing to initiate a request to start or stop wastewater service, and residents would no longer have to worry about submitting payment directly to the city six times per year. If a property were to sell mid-year, the allocation of any tax bill payments amongst owners is part of the process already conducted during the final calculation of escrow fees. Should city council approve this change, a utility bill insert notifying of the change in the collection method and listing the amount to be assessed on the property tax bill will be included with May and June's utility bills. Additional information will be made available on the city's website, and outreach will be conducted via social media. Because the city's utilities' customer service for wastewater charges will remain in-house, staff will be available to answer any additional questions from our customers. For homeowners with in-pound accounts, these residents may want to call their escrow company and confirm that the wastewater service charges are included in their upcoming property tax calculations. And for renters, these customers would need to make arrangements to pay wastewater service charges directly to the property owner as opposed to the city. So to assist homeowners with tenants' bills for the property's wastewater service, the utility bill insert will provide notification that the wastewater bill charges will be invoiced on the homeowner's property tax bill rather than bimonthly. Additionally, staff will mail a letter to the owners of these properties explaining the change, showing the annual sewer charge, and providing a copy of the utility bill insert that was sent to their tenants. Tenants and homeowners are encouraged to discuss the coordination of their future wastewater service charge payments. Staff recommends that council receive public testimony, receive the tabulation of Prop 218 protests received, adopt a Thousand Oaks Municipal Code ordinance amendment to adjust for these changes in billing methods, and adopt a resolution to authorize the collection of single-family residential wastewater service rate collection via direct assessment on the upcoming fiscal year's Ventura County Secured Property Tax Roll. Staff including Jamie Boscarino, Finance Director, and Cliff Finley, Public Works Director, are available should you have any questions.
Thank you so much. Ms. Johnson, appreciate that. So as you heard, we have Jamie Boscarino and Cliff Finley here with us to answer any questions that my colleagues may have. I'm looking to see if there are any questions before we go to our two public speakers.
I have a couple of questions.
Mr. Jones?
Yeah. If I understood the presentation and also the packet material correctly, relative to apartment houses, I understand that the owner would pay the... Am I still on?
You are. Go ahead.
Okay. The would pay the additional amount on the tax bill, but did I understand that the city or the county would also send notification to the renter of the apartment that that amount of money was being added to the apartment owner's bill, and that that would, that they would be subject to that in lieu of paying a bimonthly fee? In other words, does the county participate in conveying that knowledge to the renter? Or does the apartment owner convey that, or how does that work?
So just to provide a moment of clarification, apartments would not be included as a part of this, but if you were to have a single-family residential home and there were a tenant residing at that residence, city staff would work to notify the tenant... city staff would work to notify the tenant as well as the homeowner if this change were to go through. The county's role in a direct assessment is simply to add the charge as a separate line item on the property tax roll and to administer the issuance of the property tax bills.
Well, I guess I'm a little dense, but somebody's going to pay that amount of money for each apartment, right? Isn't that going to accrue to the owner of the apartment house?
So the properties that are not affected, such as apartments, would remain on the city's billing system? And in the case of apartments, we would continue to bill some tenants directly. And some apartments, the homeowners have, or the apartment owners have requested us to bill them directly. So there would be no change in our collection method. We would still issue the bill.
So this, what we're doing tonight would not affect apartment houses? The individual occupants would still be billed for the bimonthly fee? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Oh, I had one other thing. If we experience a cost savings, which we have just been shown that we will, did you indicate that then in the future there would be an evaluation of the rates? With the idea perhaps of lowering the rates if the city is experiencing a net reduction in cost because of the efficiencies mentioned in the, in the material here?
That's correct, yes. So the last rate study for the wastewater fund was conducted in 2019. So this fall, we're due for our next comprehensive financial plan update, which includes a wastewater rate study, and any lowered expenses or increased costs would be considered at that time.
Yeah, I would just say that that would be equitable to me. If we're saving that money, I think we ought to pass the savings on to our constituents that qualify for the savings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Are there any other questions from the council? I don't see anyone, then let's go to our two public speakers. The first one is joining us via video, Peggy Jocelyn, followed by Joyce Jorphy via telephone. Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. This is Peggy Jocelyn. I got hold of a bill from my tenant, and for 64 days, that is from 2018 to 2019 February, she was charged for, for almost average is $1.82 a day. So if you wanted to tax the owner, the tax bill will be increased by $667 a year, which is a lot of money. Besides, we have signed a very long lease with our tenants. We don't know how to collect the money. So that create an issue. And as much as I like to save the city's cost, you cannot really make the landlord become your collection agent. Usually is the, you know, user, whoever uses it will pays for it. So I just don't agree with the city try to push the collection responsibility to the property owners. Not only that, if we later on sign another lease, we want to increase the rent, then already Canal Valley rent is very unaffordable, and it's going to make it even worse. Because then we have to increase average $1.82, provided it's not increased, for 31 days and 30 days, the average is going to be like $56 a month. So we have to increase the rent by whatever the wastewater is going to be. So that's my opposition. And I'm just wondering, I didn't know that you have the equity meeting last, last week. Can I say something about the equity issue?
Go ahead.
Okay. I am a first-generation Asian American, and I lived in Canal Valley for 10 years. And I never, never experienced any discrimination. And I am from Taiwan, and which is a free, which China. And I really believe that what we are going on in America really, really very, very scary. I think it's a reverse discrimination case instead of discrimination.
Thank you so much. And next up, we have Joyce Jorphy by phone. Joyce Jorphy, she's unmuted. Go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Joyce Jorphy. I live in Newberry Park. I'm 81 years old. I'm on Social Security. And I feel that what you're trying to do with this wastewater to property tax, it would hurt a lot of us retired people. I'm not sure how much a month this would add to my tax bill. I'm under Proposition 13, thank God, because I wouldn't be able to stay in this house if I wasn't under Proposition 13, which still goes up every year. I, I can't understand why you would want to do this and add this additional amount onto the property tax. Everything is going up. Our gas, our electric, our, everything is going up. Maybe Thousand Oaks can save a few pennies, but you sure would be taking it out on us retired people. And my son is also on Social Security here. So that's all I want to say is, I think this is very unfair to put this burden on us. And that's about all I can say. I'm very unhappy with this wastewater to tax, property tax. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joyce. And I will actually go right back to staff to address your concern, Joyce, as well as that of Peggy Jocelyn.
Thank you. So just to clarify on Ms. Jocelyn's comment, the current monthly wastewater rate for single-family residential customers located inside city limits is $29.95 per month. Outside connections are $30.26 per month. And then for Ms. Jeffrey's comments, just to clarify, this is not a rate increase. So it's the same rate that we're currently charging now. It's just a different way of collecting that rate from our customers. Also, we have a wonderful utilities assistance program. And while I'm not sure currently if she's a part of that, there is capacity for those needing income assistance to certainly are encouraged to reach out to staff or visit our city's website, and we can look at getting that person enrolled if they meet the criteria.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from my council colleagues? Okay, I don't see any questions. I do have a question, though, for staff regarding, are we indeed putting the burden on collecting the fees on the landlords? Ms. Johnson, or perhaps, oh, Mr. McNamie, I saw that you raised your hand. But if we could just answer the question really quickly, if the burden is truly put on the landlords and how to deal with that?
Would you like me to speak, or do you have a question on the floor? I don't want to interrupt you.
Yeah, since I already started my question, I apologize. I figured I could get it answered really quickly, and then we go to you. My apologies.
So in short, yes, if we're currently billing tenants on behalf of homeowners right now, then if it were to go to county property tax, then the collection would shift between the two parties, which is why we would be encouraging those two parties to collaborate and to work through the change in how we collect it.
And Madam Mayor, just as a point of clarity there, you know, every lease structure is a little different. Very often, the landlord will include water, wastewater, trash service will roll up into the lease. So it depends on what that individual structure is. That's why in conversation, staff came up with the idea of actually reaching out not only just to the property owners, but to the tenants as well, and encouraging both parties to work together during the time before this hits on the December rolls to come up with an amenable...
Thank you. Councilmember McNamie, go ahead.
Two things. One is that, Ms. Johnson, I think you were very clear in your presentation that this is not a rate increase. Instead of collecting every two months our wastewater bill, it would be, just simply be put into the property tax bills, which would wind up being, at the end of the year, the same amount. I don't know how else to make it more clear, but I understand there is some confusion out there that this is a rate increase. I've been approached by others along those lines. If you have any magic words to share with that, I'd be glad to hear it so I can communicate it to others that this is not a rate increase. It's just a matter of every two months, instead of getting billed in the mail and sending a check off, it winds up being attached to the property tax bill. So any thoughts on that with Ms. Johnson?
Absolutely. So anytime we go through a comprehensive utility rate study, which again is planned for this fall, if there are any proposed changes to our rates, all affected property owners or ratepayers would receive a letter notifying that there would be a public hearing, and that would be their opportunity to provide comments and feedback to city council on that topic. So that would continue, even if we were to go forward with county property tax for the actual charges, they would still receive the notification from city of Thousand Oaks staff about any potential rate increases in the future.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Johnson. The other observation is that we're looking at, quote, "cooperation" between the tenant and landlord to work out the water rates somehow figured into perhaps the rental rate. However, what is experienced in human nature is that if the tenant is paying directly for the water, the tenant tends to be a little more frugal and more judicious with their use of water and wastewater. Excuse me. Result is that if they are looking at this through the property tax bill that the landlord sees, and landlord somehow has to predict how much water that tenant is going to use, that places that landlord in a very, very vulnerable position that they wind up with a larger bill than what was originally negotiated. I'm not really feeling comfortable with what the city right now is doing, saying they want it to work out between the tenant and landlord, where there should be some other mechanism in which the tenant is aware of what's going on, as to what the fee is going to be, and the landlord perhaps can collect. Maybe every other month, it's posted on the website that the landlord can tag into the rental on a monthly basis to not let the tenant get be too far ahead with the amount owed. Is that a clear statement? I want to just make certain that was clear to everybody, because I'm not seeing this being equitable for either the tenant and/or the landlord.
Yeah, Councilmember McNamie, let me step in and take that one. I'm Cliff Finley. I'm the Director of Public Works. This, the, we're just talking about wastewater here, not water. And wastewater, the wastewater bill, the monthly bill, is a fixed amount. And it is set once a year. And if it, if there is an increase proposed, it would only occur once a year. So it's very predictable. In fact, on January 1st, we can predict exactly what that's going to be for the entire year. And it does not impact the water rates, the water rates, how much water you use does not impact wastewater rates at all. And water rates will still continue to be billed as they are today.
Thank you for that clarification that it's not dealing with water, although other cities gear your wastewater based on how much water you consume. I've forgotten that we just charge a flat rate regardless of how much one home consumes versus another. So I'm hearing from you that if that rate change was going to happen, the landlord could incorporate that into the lease. Thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely. And I'd also like to point out that Thousand Oaks is actually near the lowest wastewater rates of any city in Ventura County. So we...
And that's a very nice tribute to the good people that work here in the city to provide that service. So thank you.
Very good. Are there any other questions? Mayor Protem Engler, and then Councilmember Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This isn't really a question. I think we're in comments almost by now. But it seems to me that at its root here, what basically we're doing is changing vendors for our billing services. Is that more along the lines of what we're actually doing here? The apartment houses and those larger structures are exempted from this. It's supposed to be single-family residences. It seems that to be able just to change vendors and save some money, which add to Councilmember Jones's point, may actually wind up reducing our rates a little bit if all things being equal. Seems to be a good idea to me, but perhaps it's not quite that simple.
Okay. I'm not sure whether staff wanted to weigh in on it, but perhaps, and we can go to Councilmember Adam.
Yeah, I thought I'd make a motion, Mayor, if that's okay?
I do see Councilmember McNamie's hand up.
Oh, okay.
Let's do the, let's go to him back.
Go right ahead.
Thank you, sir. I'll finish this question very quick so you can put the motion forth. I would think this would be Mr. Finley. Just to clarify, are apartment complexes at a different wastewater rate than residential? And if you have a four-unit apartment versus a 20 versus 100-unit apartment, is the rate the same for apartments as residential, or are they different?
The rates vary depending on how the apartment is set up. It's the number of units. Some apartment units, or some apartments are set up such that the landlord includes wastewater and water for all of the units. Others are paid individually. So that's kind of why we decided it's not as predictable as a single-family home, which is why we elected to. And also, I want to point out that 80% of our services are single-family homes, which, again, it's a very large chunk.
Excellent. Thank you. And Mr. Adam?
Actually, we do have to close a public hearing first before we can consider a motion. I want to make sure there are no further questions. And we also need to go to the city clerk before we can entertain a motion. She needs to report the results. Mr. Jones?
I'd just like to reiterate what I said earlier. If we're going to save $72,000 and 325 hours of staff time, seems to me that we're going to save some money on this whole transaction if it goes forward as it is currently set up. Since we're not a profit-making organization, I think we ought to pass those savings on to the general public in terms of their rates.
Ms. Boscarino, would you like to weigh in regarding the water fund?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Jones. The city is very focused on efficiencies and bringing value to our residents and our customers. And so that is our focus and our goal, and that is one of the reasons that we moved forward with this process, because we knew it would reduce costs and be more efficient for our staff to provide those services. We're going to be embarking upon our, like Sherri mentioned, our wastewater and water rate process over the next couple of months. And that will certainly be incorporated into the development of our rates. Of course, some costs increase every year, but certainly by reducing costs in other areas, it will all be incorporated into our rate development process. I would also like to mention, normally, we would be increasing, we're adjusting rates this coming January, but we are not doing that with wastewater this go-around. So the rates that we have today will be the same rates that customers pay come January as well, because we have to let the county know in June what our rates are for the entire fiscal year and next year. So the rates that we have today is what they will be paying in December and in April. There will be no change over this upcoming fiscal year in our wastewater rates. So in actuality, they actually are saving money, because there is going to be no rate adjustments come January.
Well, if I understand you correctly, you're saying that you were planning to raise the rates?
I'm just saying, when we do rate adjustments, we always do them in January. So if the rate plan that we're working on currently had recommended a rate adjustment, it would be effective January 2022. But we will not be doing that for wastewater this go-around. So if there's potential that water may have adjustments come January 2022, but wastewater will not. It will be the same rate.
Well, I don't want to press this forever, but if we're going to be saving $72,000 plus 325 hours of staff time, doesn't that indicate we might be able to lower the rates rather than just hold them even against some fairly nebulous idea that they have to go up every year?
Well, they certainly don't have to go up every year, but if you look at our total wastewater budget... wastewater budget between our operations and our capital, it's over $20 million a year. So, $72,000 out of over $20 million is a very, very small, small percentage of our overall wastewater budget. So, yes, it's great. We're saving money, but it's just such a small portion of our overall budget to run and operate and maintain our wastewater system.
And the 325 hours of staff time, isn't that worth something?
So, we spoke in the meeting in February that we plan, and the state would like to see this as well, that we move to monthly water bills. That's much easier for the public to get a handle on if they have leaks. You know, right now, they're getting a bill every two months. So, if you have a leak, you're not necessarily noticing that for two, two or three months down the road. So, doing monthly water bills would enable us, doing this and saving the staff hours enables our staff to be able to process monthly water bills, which would help our customers as well, and hopefully reduce their, what they're paying for water, because they see how much they're using on a quicker basis. And there's a possibility that the state would make us go to water budgeting, and so this would enable us to have staff available to do that and not have to hire staff to move to water budgeting or to move to monthly water bills.
Yeah. Well, just in conclusion, our goal is to, to the best we can for our people, right?
Correct.
So, if we're saving money, hopefully, that is going to be good for them in some way. Either keeping it steady if we're going to raise it, as I think you're indicating, or giving them a slight lowering of the, of the budget. I mean, that's our goal. So...
So, Councilmember Jones, if I might just add on to Jamie's comment, we have, we just completed our wastewater master plan, which calls for substantial investments and modifications that need to occur out there over the coming years. As we do a rate study, those rate studies have to incorporate more than just the functional aspect of the, the service at someone's home. It has to, has to address all of the comprehensive components that are in. And so, I, certainly, this savings will flow into the rate study. I think what, Jamie wasn't trying to diminish it. I think what she's saying is, as a functional portion of that, of that budget, it's relatively small. And so, as you, as we look at incorporating that, and we're required by law to conduct this rate study, when we justify whatever our rates are going to be, whether they come up or come down, we rely upon that. So, it certainly will be incorporated. You can be assured of that. It's just a matter of, we don't know how it will shake out as we sit here today.
Yeah. Well, since it's listed as an advantage in the package, I would hope that that is an advantage to our ratepayers too, as well as our city. And from what you say, I understand you're going to take that into consideration. So, I didn't mean to press this so much. But since it was listed as an advantage, I think the advantage whenever possible should go to the public. That's all.
Yeah. And I agree with you wholeheartedly in the sense that, especially for our early founders that created the wastewater treatment plan where you did, one of the main reasons we're able to provide the rates that we are is that we're able to have the benefit of everything flowing to the lowest point in our community. And that's how we've been able to maintain those rates to the benefit of our, our residents, you know, having cited that location where it is today.
Excellent. So, unless council has any further questions, I will declare this public hearing closed. Any other questions? This is your last chance. Okay. The public hearing is closed, and I will know, no, I will now turn it over to Ms. Rodriguez.
Madam Mayor, the results are as follows. The total number of notices issued by the city on the proposed collection of residential wastewater service charges on Ventura County's secured property tax roll was 35,116, representing 36,596 affected parcels. Seventy-six total valid protests were received. Based on the results, there are insufficient protests received for a majority protest, as 18,298 protests were required. Thank you.
Thank you. And now, Mr. Adam. Now you may make your motion.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, let me just say that as long as I've been on this council, I've been so impressed about how the city is always looking for ways to be more and more efficient, whether it's in huge numbers, for example, refinancing our pension debt and saving taxpayers $30 million, to reissuing our library bond at a lower interest rate, saving our taxpayers hundreds of thousands of dollars, to something like the wastewater rates, which will save $70,000 a year and about 3,200 hours of staff time. It's just a cost-effective way. It's, it's a good way to streamline our services, I think. And as it's been said time and again, there is no rate change. It's merely a billing change. The rates remain the same. And speaking of the rates, Mr. Finley's absolutely right. We do, in fact, have, if not the low, well, I think the, the lowest wastewater rate in the county. And, and all the years I've been on the council, I don't even remember it changing. If it has, it's maybe a couple of pennies. So, and it's just thanks to the, you know, the Hill Canyon Plan, some of the, some of the infrastructure that we put in. So, I think it's a good move. And, oh, and furthermore, if this appears on your, on your property tax bill, there could be some tax advantages for you as well. So, with that, I'd like to move 8A that we bill on the property tax bill for wastewater now going forward.
Okay. So, you move to approve recommendation one and two. All right.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments regarding the motion? Okay. None? Then, I just would like to say that it does pay off sometimes to have a city-owned public utility, because city rates are lower than what I pay in Westlake and what others pay in Newberry Park with the other privately-owned purveyors. All right. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And Madam Mayor, that motion carries, and I do have an ordinance title to read. It's an ordinance amending sections 10-1.703, 10-1.901, 10-1.902, 10-1.908, and 10-1.909 of the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code regarding billing and payment regulations governing the city's wastewater service charges.
Thank you very much. Our next public hearing is actually about California American Water Company, and that will be presented by our special projects manager, Graham Watts. Good evening.
Mayor, if I could just open the public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider agenda item 8B, public franchise to California American Water Company. And at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
Thank you. Mr. Watts, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor De La Peña, and members of the City Council. The California Public Utilities Commission, California Public Utilities Commission requires the city to conduct a public hearing to consider the approval of a new franchise agreement with one of the four water purveyors in Thousand Oaks. Tonight's presentation will provide some background on the process and the services provided by the California American Service Water Company. This franchise agreement describes CalAM's legal and financial responsibilities, an established code of conduct in connection with constructing, operating, and maintaining private water distribution facilities within the city boundaries. It sets the terms of the relationship between the city and CalAM as a California Public Utilities Commission approved water purveyor for Thousand Oaks. California American Water is currently operating under the terms and conditions of a 2006 franchise agreement that will expire this June. On March 16, 2021, the City Council adopted a resolution of intent to extend the existing franchise to 2036 and set tonight's meeting as a public hearing date. California American Water is one of four water purveyors that serve Thousand Oaks with 21,000 connections. The city has 17,000 connections, and California Water Service Company has 7,000 connections. Camarosa Water Company also has a small area in the very northern portion of the city. The updated agreement includes language related to new commercial and automobile liability insurance, as well as encroachment compliance and CalAM's submittal of an annual capital improvement plan to the city. It's important to note that this franchise agreement does not reference water rates. Water rates are addressed through a rate case approval process administered by the California Public Utilities Commission, not the city. Staff's recommendation is noted in the staff report, and this concludes our presentation.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? None whatsoever. Okay. Let me see. We have the PowerPoint. If they, we don't have any public speakers and no questions, then I can close the public hearing and open it up to a discussion and/or motion. Okay. Public hearing is closed.
Madam Mayor...
Go ahead.
I'd, I'd be happy to move the motion for both, both points so that we can move along.
Yes, go ahead.
Look, I think I just did.
All right. So, Councilmember or Mayor Protem Bob Engler moves staff recommendation one and two. Please vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill De La Peña?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0, and I have an ordinance title to read, that is, which is an ordinance granting to California American Water Company, "The Right Privilege in Franchise to Construct, Use, Maintain, and Operate Pipelines and Appurtenances for the Transmission and Distribution of Water for Any and All Purposes in, Along, Across, Upon, and Under the Public Streets and Rights of Way, as the same now or may hereafter exist within the City of Thousand Oaks."
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mr. Watts. That was really quick. And we are now moving on to a study session of our proposed capital improvement budget, item number 9A. And this will be presented by Jamie Boscarino, our finance director.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. Tonight, we are here to hold a study session for our CIP budget, our Capital Improvement Budget. And there are a few other staff members here tonight as well that will be available to answer any questions at the end of tonight's presentation. This is probably my favorite part of the budget, developing and presenting the CIP budget to City Council and the public. This is highlighting all of the wonderful and exciting projects and how we are going to invest in our community over the next two years. So, the purpose of tonight's CIP study session is to review the proposed fiscal year's 2021 through 2023 CIP budget. As this is a study session, both City Council and the public will have the opportunity to ask questions and make comments on the proposed CIP budget. Tonight is the second study session of the biennial budget process. The first study session was in March with the review of the draft user fees manual, and the last study session will be in May with review of the proposed operating budget. A public hearing on user fees is scheduled for the next City Council meeting, April 27, and the operating and CIP budget's public hearing is planned for June 8. The CIP budget, just like the operating budget, is a two-year budget. However, it also includes a five-year CIP plan. The proposed two-year CIP budget includes 132 projects for a total budget over the next two years of 111 million. The preparation of the CIP budget is a lengthy planning process that actually kicked off all the way back in October of last year with a CIP kickoff meeting. Between November and March, staff developed CIP projects to be included in the five-year plan. This included a comprehensive evaluation of needs and City Council priorities. Once departments prepared their initial draft list of projects, they worked closely in conjunction with the finance department on the fund balance analysis, ensuring that the proposed CIP budget is financially feasible and responsible. The proposed CIP budget was taken to the Capital Facilities Committee on March 31 for review and to put Planning Commission last night for consistency with the city's general plan. Budget engagement has been a vital part of the city's budget process over the past several years. Normally, staff would go out into the community at various events, such as the Rotary Street Fair, Farmers Market, but obviously, with COVID, that wasn't possible. So, we had to reimagine the engagement process this year. A separate budget site was developed, www.tobudget.org, that the public could access to do a deeper dive into the budget development process. We wanted to take away some of the mystery of the budget, budget process by going through a step-by-step guide, and that's on our TO Budget website. We also significantly focused on virtual engagement through social media outreach on a variety of platforms. Results from our budget priority survey and our outreach efforts will be shared at the operating budget meeting. So, if you haven't yet had a chance to take our budget priority survey, please view our website and go online and take the budget priority survey. And we'll share the results at the operating budget study session. As I previously mentioned, the CIP budget is different than the operating budget in that it offers a five-year CIP plan. This is a strategic way to focus on long-term needs and requirements and proactively plan now for any potential funding challenges in the future. There are many CIP projects that can take more than two years to complete. So, having a five-year plan also helps to plan staffing resources. Projects can be multi-funded. A sidewalk project, for example, may come from a combination of grant funding, gas tax funding, and developer fee funding. The general fund funds mainly facilities, including some theaters projects, library, and stormwater projects, and does so through the use of capital reserves. The general fund is also used sometimes as a city grant match. Projects are not funded with ongoing operating revenues, only with reserves that are specifically set aside for capital projects. The proposed CIP budget manual is broken up into three main sections. The summary section, which includes the five-year summary by project category, by fund, and the revenue summary. The summary section also includes the deferred requirement summary. This highlights past maintenance and improvements that were deferred, as well as if any deferral of maintenance is included in the proposed CIP budget. The next section is the projects by category sections. The categories include facilities, housing, landscape, streetscape, library, open space, stormwater, streets, transportation traffic, undergrounding, wastewater, and water. And the final section is the projects by fund section. This includes a page for each fund, a listing of the projects proposed to be budgeted from the fund. The fund summary includes the beginning capital reserve amount available for spending, the amount to be carried forward over from existing projects into the proposed budget, any required reserves, anticipated capital revenues that will be coming in over the next five years, and the ending balance in the fund after taking into consideration all proposed projects. The two indexes in the back include a listing of projects by number and a listing of projects alphabetically by name. In the project by category section is where the detailed project sheets for each of the CIP projects proposed to be either carried forward as an existing project or a new project that has been identified in the two-year budget. There are not detailed sheets included for projects that are proposed in the other three years of the plan. The project detail sheets are where you can find out more information about a project, from the description of the project, who the project manager is, dissipation for why the city needs to do the project, the city council goal that it adheres to, the consistency with the city's general plans, if there's an operations impact that would result from completing the project, when the project is anticipated to start and finish, the city council's CIP priority of the project, as well as the funding sources for the five-year plan. The detail sheets would include all pertinent information one would need to find out about a project. The detail sheets would include all pertinent information one would need to find out about a project. Each project states which City Council's CIP priority it meets, as I just mentioned. The priorities were established in 2009 for guidance in prioritizing capital projects. The definitions were last updated in 2015 to add City Council top priorities, which you guys just chose a couple weeks ago, the definition for CIP priority number one. In addition, all CIP projects that come for the City Council during the year have the CIP priority listed in the staff report. Since City Council's goal setting was March 30th, where the top 10 City Council priorities for the next fiscal year were established, the proposed draft doesn't incorporate all of these new City Council priorities into this draft that you see tonight. So we'll update that for the operating budget and CIP budget public hearing, if necessary, on any project. In reviewing the proposed fiscal year CIP budget, there are 11 project categories this year, which are listed in numerical order from the greatest proposed budget to the least on this slide, with the streets category proposing a budget of 25.5 million out of an overall proposed budget of 111 million. Total proposed carryover of existing project budgets is 52.8 million. The housing project category was revived this year in order to incorporate the city's framework of the American Rescue Plan's Respond, Rebuild, Recover, with a focus on setting aside funds to tackle affordable housing and homelessness efforts. Also included is the proposed deferred maintenance requirements of 18.4 million related to streets, which I'll discuss in greater detail. The historical comparison of the CIP budget is presented in this graph. You can see that the total budget amount and the total number of projects has varied over the past 10 years. Although this is the highest proposed budget in the past 10 years, the bulk of the increase is due to the added housing category with total budget of 16.3 million. The city has adequate funds available in general fund reserves, as shown in the fund analysis at the back of the budget, in order to complete the proposed projects over the next two years. Every two years during staff development of the budget, themes emerge. Some themes are new and some are a continuation. The city is nearing 60 years old. Our infrastructure is aging, and it costs to keep it properly maintained on a schedule so that maintenance is not deferred, which leads to even higher costs down the road. We've seen the results of aging storm drains, sinkholes occurring in various parts of the city. And as I highlighted, affordable housing and homelessness efforts are a new theme this year. We focused on deferred street maintenance in the past. However, this is the first time that we are specifically setting aside funding towards that deferred street maintenance. Environmental sustainability is another area of focus with our Climate and Environmental Action Plan, solar projects, and electrical vehicle charging infrastructure. We also continue to be strategically focused on several areas, including landscaping and stormwater. And as I just mentioned, City Council completed their annual goal setting at the last meeting on March 30th. And although some of the priorities are not addressed as part of the CIP budget, such as the waste holler implementation, staff believes the proposed CIP budget sets aside sufficient funding to address the City Council top priorities. This map highlights the location of the 132 CIP projects and how funds are being invested throughout all areas of the city, whether it be streets, landscaping, water, wastewater, or other types of projects. This list provides the top 10 projects based on total fiscal year 2021 through 2023 budget, with the carryover budget also included. These 10 projects account for almost 50% of the total proposed budget of 111 million. Five of the projects are existing, and five are new projects. This graph highlights the funding sources for the proposed CIP budget. The bulk of the funding is coming from the General Fund, wastewater fund, water fund, and gas tax funds, which combined are approximately 2/3 of the total funding for the CIP budget. The General Fund is the city's discretionary funding source, and it can be used for any purpose. Funding for the CIP program out of the General Fund is from capital reserves that have already been set aside for capital projects, not from ongoing general operating revenues. Based on several years of general fund surplus, there are adequate reserves available in the General Fund to fund the proposed projects. The total proposed budget is 22.1 million with a carryover of 1.9 million. In past years, the General Fund primarily supported improvements and maintenance of city facilities, including the library. As you can see, the largest project category this budget cycle is for housing projects. Although not shown in the CIP General Fund budget, there is also a planned 8.1 million total transfer out of the General Fund in the operating budget to fund street overlay and slurry. 5 million of the transfer were streets that have deferred maintenance requirements. Highlighting some of the major projects funded by the General and Library Funds are the 10 million towards affordable housing and homelessness efforts. When specific opportunities are identified, the project will be brought forward to the entire City Council for approval. There is also a prefabricated solar system or carports that are planned at the library, and staff believes that this moves the city forward in environmental sustainability efforts. As part of the American Rescue Plan and our efforts to respond, rebuild, recover, the city's partnership with CRPD to construct the last major park in the city, Canaho Creek Southwest Park, is also planned. CRPD, despite being a special district form of government and experiencing revenue loss during the pandemic, did not receive any federal or state stimulus funding. With the project being short of funding, this ensures that residents of our city, and specifically residents in that area, have access to a modern outdoor park to recreate. At the Hillcrest Center, the mechanical systems will be updated, which will also lead to more energy-efficient systems. Gas tax funding comes from highway user tax accounts, SB 1, which was passed a few years ago, and TDA revenue sources. These revenues are restricted to street and road projects, including sidewalks and bike lanes. The CIP budget is 14.5 million with a carryover of 0.9 million. Although the city has funded street maintenance at the required amounts to maintain existing levels of service for the past four years, prior deferred street maintenance is now estimated at 23.4 million, based on the 2019 pavement management program. With the 5 million proposed General Fund transfer specifically for deferred maintenance, the total deferred maintenance will now decrease to 18.4 million. I know this graph has been shown many times in our presentations and most recently at the goal setting, but it's really important that we emphasize how our existing revenue sources for street maintenance do not cover our existing need of 8 million annually. The orange is the General Fund support, so without that, the annual revenue is approximately 6.4 million, whereas our need is 8 million in order to keep our existing level of service of our, of our streets. Without the passage of SB 1, which is the RRA, the city would be short about 4 million annually, so thankfully that was passed by the voters a couple years ago. The total overlay and slurry street maintenance projects, along with the curb ramps that are constructed at the same time, is 21.8 million, the most significant project the city has ever done. This will enable the city to resurface up to 70 miles of streets. We're also continuing the sidewalk replacement program with a budget of 400,000. Capital projects and developer fee funds proposed CIP budget is 11.5 million with a carryover of 6.2 million. The majority of the new budget is due to the 8.1 million transfer from the General Fund, which I just talked about, for the overlay and slurry street projects. Developer fees are levied on new development projects in the city. The funds are used to construct public facilities, including streets, sidewalks, and traffic signals. The city has experienced a decrease in developer fees due to build-out, which can lead to postponement of some projects or would require alternative funding sources, such as the General Fund. A quick highlight of the capital projects in the developer fee funds include widening at Westlake and Thousand Oaks Boulevard, improvements at the intersection of Erbs and Sunset Hills, and the existing improvements project at the Lawrence and Teller Road intersection. The lighting and landscaping fund's proposed budget is 6.6 million with a small carryover. Funds are primarily from the lighting and landscaping special assessments and add below in property tax revenue. The lighting fund is budgeting over 1 million in necessary traffic signal upgrade improvement projects in order to maintain, maintain safety and reliability of the city's traffic signals and lighting. The landscape fund has two major projects, 3 million for landscaping improvements along Westlake Boulevard between Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Allison Street, and also 2 million for landscaping improvements along Thousand Oaks Boulevard between Duesenberg and the county line. There are many challenges and complexities to funding stormwater programs. Municipalities throughout California face limitations in creating dedicated funding streams to manage the regulatory framework for stormwater management, including the requirements of the National Pollution Distarch Elimination System, the municipal separate storm sewer system permit, and the total maximum daily load programs. The city's stormwater program is partially funded by a county-wide stormwater assessment that is inadequate to meet capital requirements, necessitating General Fund support. Since increasing the assessment would require a vote of the people of Ventura County, the assessment amount has not been changed in over a decade. The proposed CIP budget is 1.3 million in our stormwater. The major project is the Malibu Creek TMDL project. There's also additional funding for catch phasen trash control devices and a watershed management plan. Staff regularly seeks out federal and state grant opportunities in order to fund projects, and we have been quite successful in this arena. The proposed CIP budget is 8.9 million in new grants with carryover of 5.8 million in existing grants. A few of the existing grant-funded projects are highlighted here, with the Los Feliz sidewalks project, the Rancho Road sidewalk and bike lanes project, and the Canaho School Road at Willow Lane improvements project. New projects include a microgrid at the MSC, similar to the recently approved microgrid at the Hillcana Treatment Plant. And there are also three flood mitigation projects planned at Westlake Boulevard, Erbs Road, and Drake Drive. Finally, the city hopes to receive grant funding for the Hampshire Road 101 improvements project. Approving this project for funding now in the CIP budget enables the city to be poised to seek additional federal and state funding. The Water Fund proposed CIP budget is 17.2 million with a carryover of 23 million. The largest project is the Los Rubles Groundwater Utilization Project in the amount of new budget of 4.6 million with the 15.3 million carryover. Some grant funding has already been received, and the city continues to seek out additional grant funding for this project. Based on our aging infrastructure, various site improvements at reservoirs and pump stations are planned, with 1.2 million in budget and 800,000 carryover. The city has also been doing reservoir improvement projects at each of the city's reservoirs. Proposed in this budget cycle is Wilder Reservoir. In addition, an emergency generator is planned for the Lone Oak Pump Station, which will improve system reliability during power outages and provides an emergency power source for Wilder Freeway and La Granada reservoirs. The wastewater fund proposed budget is 20.1 million with a 12.6 million carryover. An upgrade to the cogeneration at the Hillcana Treatment Plant is planned, along with improvements to the unit Y2 interceptor. A fats, oils, and grease, or FOG, station is also proposed. FOG acceptance is integral to renewable energy initiatives. The Hillcana Treatment Plant master plan was recently completed, so there are also many projects included in the wastewater fund based on the master plan. Staff is also in the process of developing the water and waste water financial plans, and we will come back to council this fall. The Transportation Fund proposed budget is 1.9 million, includes our bus shelter enhancements and transit technology upgrades. The majority of the funding is from grants and TDA funds. Staff is closely watching the development of President Biden's infrastructure plan for additional funding opportunities for transit projects, such as electric buses. Other enterprise funds include the golf course and solid waste funds. The golf course proposed budget of 550,000 is for unexpected improvements or maintenance that needs to occur, as well as renovation of the parking lot. The solid waste funding of 55,000, a small carryover, is part of the MSC microgrid and Climate Action Environmental Plan, which is multi-funded. As I mentioned, this is the first time the housing category is back in several years. The city currently has two housing funds, the Housing Successor Fund, which the city established upon dissolution of the former RDA, as well as the Housing and Lutrust Fund. There is currently approximately 6.3 million in cash between the two funds. As a requirement by dissolution law and restrictions on the Housing Successor Fund, the city is required to spend or encumber funds starting June 30th, 2022, or else the funds will be required to be turned over to the state. In this budget cycle, the city will be required to spend or encumber approximately 1 million on affordable housing or homelessness projects by June 30th, 2023. In summary, the proposed CIP budget of 111 million is financially feasible across all funds. Staff spent a significant amount of time evaluating each fund and reviewing projects to ensure that the proposed budget is a prudent investment of city funds. We are a maintenance community with aging infrastructure that costs money to ensure it is maintained properly, so as not to defer maintenance and increase long-term costs. Staff believes this presents not only a sustainable budget, but one that significantly and strategically invests in the community by committing funds towards affordable housing and homelessness and reducing deferred street maintenance, thus achieving our goal to respond, rebuild, and recover. I want to thank staff for their significant amount of work in preparing the proposed CIP budget, especially our Budget Officer Brent Sakaida and staff from the Public Works Department. So tonight's recommendations are to receive information on the proposed fiscal year 2021-22 and fiscal year 2022-23 CIP budget as presented, and schedule a public hearing for June 8. And with that, myself and staff are available for any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Boscarino. That is quite the involved report, and it does require a lot of dedication and time to do this. And so I thank your, your team very much on behalf of the council. We do not, we do have one public speaker, but I wanted to see if my colleagues have any questions before we go to the speaker. I don't see any hands up. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, well, I didn't know I was gonna.
No, I'm just.
Here on the screen. I didn't hit the hands up. Oh, I see there's. Well, I don't know if it's appropriate right now. I do want to ask a few questions on some of the projects that she just listed. Would that be appropriate now or after the person testifies that is waiting?
You can certainly ask the questions now.
Well, and some of these projects, I noticed one had to do with Malibu Creek. And what is it that, that the city of Thousand Oaks has to do with Malibu Creek?
I'll, I'll take that one. This is a, we, we actually, a portion of the city drains into Malibu Creek, really right around the City of Westlake and North Ranch drain into Malibu Creek. And we have a requirement, there is a bacteria TMDL that we have to comply with in Malibu Creek. TMDL, it's a new one for you, Ed, is total maximum daily limit of bacteria, so.
I think, I think that's better than RAS.
Yeah. So anyway, that's, that's our involvement. It's a, it's a State Water Resource Control Board requirement of our permit, and we are actively trying to resolve bacteria in Malibu Creek.
Okay. I'll come back to my RAS indication later. The second thing is, looks like we're going to have a little bit of money to improve the Hampshire 101 situation. Do we have any idea what the total amount of money would be to bring that up to where it should be? That's going to be a lot of money, isn't it?
Yeah, I can help clarify that one. Councilmember Jones, this is not her. The current cost estimate for that project, although it's quite preliminary at this point, is roughly $75 million.
Yeah, and this is, we're talking about two or three million here, right? Something like that.
Yeah, initial seeding to help move the project along and help us secure some additional funding and begin the process.
I think that'd be a little bit too much to ask the proposed developer of the old Kmart to contribute. So I guess we'll have to find other sources. The 101, let's see, the golf course. I just wondered, do the fees paid for use of the golf course, do they form a significant amount of the annual budget of the golf course?
So for the city's golf course, the fees that golfers pay, as well as those who use our event center, whether it be for a wedding or some sort of special event, and those all fee, all those fees pay for not only the operations, but also the capital projects that need to occur at the golf course.
So that, so that's covered by fees. We don't have to. We don't have to put additional money into the golf course?
No, when we did the major renovation back in, I think, two thousand and two, the general fund did loan the golf course, and so the golf course fund is paying off the general fund loan currently. But no, typically, unless there's a huge project like that that needs to occur, the funding is paid for by the golfers and the users of the golf course.
But other than that large investment, the golf course is pretty well self-sustaining, is it?
Yeah, and we, we had a rough year, obviously, the past year with not being able to hold any special events due to COVID, but the, it's very, very difficult to get a tee time at the golf course right now. It's just, they have had the most number of golfers over the past year that they have had in over a decade. It's, it's very well used currently.
Well, it sounds like you've been trying to get a time. Well, you know, Jamie, let me say, really, seriously, sincerely, I, I really appreciate your motivation and enthusiasm. I, there, there would be nothing in the world harder for me than to try to do that complicated budget work that you do. So hats off to you. Thank you.
All right, and any other questions? I do have a question really quickly regarding the Willow Street project. I was wondering whether that would have been a good candidate for undergrinding, undergrinding, undergrounding power lines, and did we make an attempt to get some funding for that?
Yes, Mayor, that project, although which it doesn't include undergrounding, the undergrounding work has been done separately and has been done in conjunction with a developer of the apartment building that was recently constructed on, on Conejo School Road. So the undergrounding of the poles on Conejo School Road will be, is already in process and is nearly complete, and the poles will be, will be coming down.
Oh, I was talking about the stretch from Hampshire Road to the under, to the overpass right there, where these power poles are by the plumbing business facing the freeway.
On Willow Lane, okay.
I'm sorry, what did I say? Conejo School Road?
The project is a long project, a mile and a half long.
Yes. So that was, that is what I was talking about, that stretch with all of the, the power poles.
Yeah, typically, we have not had any luck with any grant funding or undergrounding. I don't believe we've ever received a grant funding to underground overhead power lines.
So the power poles that are there on Willow Lane, they, they look pretty tired. They will remain there, or will they be replaced?
Those are not included in the current project estimate. That probably would be, we'd be looking at another million dollars or so to do that additional work.
Okay. All right. Are there any, are there any other questions? If not, I will call the Speaker Kat Selm this evening.
Hello, good evening.
Hi there.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Kat, and I'm a renter here in Thousand Oaks. As a renter in the Conejo Valley, I do struggle with affordability, and in my career, I frequently come into contact with many homeless residents in our county, so I just want to say a personal thanks for the housing assistance support item in the budget. I think it's great. There's many people in the city that desperately need that. However, the need to take care of economically disadvantaged people in the city will only be exacerbated by the climate crisis. Just this past week, we exceeded four hundred and twenty parts per million of CO2 for the first time ever in recorded human history. This is a crisis of epic proportions, and if we're treating the climate emergency like the COVID-19 emergency, I feel like our budget priorities would probably look a little different. I imagine we'd be spending less on roads and more on bike lanes and increasing the number of great projects like the MSC microgrid, the prefab solar project, and the groundwater project. The cost of inaction on climate is going to be far greater than what it is today. In your budget, the Woolsey Fire landscape restoration has cost nine hundred and forty thousand dollars, almost a million. Imagine incurring this cost multiple times a year. This is what we're headed towards. California received a terrible bill of health from climate scientist Daniel Swain this week, who said that recent trends in California wildfire season offer an early preview of larger changes to come, and that this year, Northern California has had the driest water years since nineteen seventy nine, when conditions were not even as warm as they are now. We need to do better on anticipating these changes by ensuring energy reliability in the face of power safety shut offs by distributing microgrids throughout the city, and we need to do our part to reduce our emissions to get us in line with the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. Adaptation and mitigation have to be a lens that you take on all municipal operations to future-proof your city and to make sure we're doing our part to reduce emissions and protect the people of Thousand Oaks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wondering if staff would like to address the comments just made. I'm not sure if Dr. Cox is available tonight, perhaps Mr. Finley regarding sustainability and the threat to climate.
Yes, Dr. Cox is not available this evening, but we have included significant investment in our climate action plan and our climate mitigation projects, lots of solar projects there. We've got the microgrid, and, and as time goes on, we will continue as, as the Climate and Environmental Action Plan is completed, I'm sure we'll have a whole list of ideas and things that we can move forward with in the coming years.
Thank you. Any other questions? If there are no additional questions, then I'm asking for a vote. Who's volunteering? Mr. Adam?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Hold on. Whoops. Put my little hand up there.
It would just to be.
Anyway, yeah, hey, I appreciate the Speaker mentioning the housing emphasis on this budget. I, too, am glad to see that, whether it's permanent supportive housing, emergency homeless shelter, land trust, and to things to incentivize affordable housing. It fits very timely, and it addresses a need here in the community, and, well, there's just some, just some great projects included here, whether it's the Conejo Creek Southwest Park, the Willow Lane project, all the EV stations that we're going to be building for the environment, planting oak trees, coming up with a new water source at Los Robles Golf to make us less dependent on imported water, open space maintenance, street maintenance. We have the best streets in the county, and it's a budget like this that speaks to how well we do on a community attitude survey, when over ninety percent of our residents say that they're happy with the quality of life here in the city of Thousand Oaks. And it's these kind of projects that make people happy, and I, with that, I will move eight A, let's see, or no, hold it, nine A, and, yeah, we're moving it to June where we look at the final recommendations, correct?
Yes, so you move to approve staff recommendations one and two?
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments to the motion? No comments? I think it is an excellent, excellent capital improvement project budget, very well and thoughtfully prepared with climate and our future in mind. Mayor Protem Engler.
Sorry, Madam Mayor, I couldn't quite get to the hand raised thing quick enough.
I see.
I, I just want to reflect, this is a, a reflection really on the amount of good fiscal management that the city councils in the past have done to be able to allow us at this point to be able to do some exciting projects, such as what Councilmember Adams pointed out. I'm very happy to see that we're able to spend a little bit of effort and time, money, on being ready to assist in, in the housing area. That has been a, a topic that has been coming around more and more frequently, and to be able now to be able to, to do something to help assist those people in the, in the community is very nice. It's a capital improvement budget, and I wanted to point out to everybody, whereas it is a quite, quite a bit of money, the, these projects are not, they're, they're one-time money. It's money that's going to be spent to get the city into a better position. It's not an ongoing expense that we're, we're saddling somehow into the future. So by spending the money now, we're just going to save money in the long run, and I'm happy to support it.
Thank you very much. Yes, absolutely. The, the housing category being in there is vitally important, that we use that money to assist nonprofits or nonprofit developers, nonprofit organizations, rather than for-profit industry. Very good. So we have a motion. Please vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Yes.
And Mayor Bill DeLa Penya?
Yes.
And that motion carries five zero.
Excellent, and that takes us now to a department report, ten A, which will be presented by Tim Giles, our Human Resources Director. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. The Deputy Community Development Director, Michael Forbes, has recently been named to be the Director of Community Development for the City of Westlake Village. And while we congratulate him on this move in his career, this is going to be a, a loss to the city. As the council is aware, one of Mr. Forbes' key responsibilities is leading the comprehensive general plan update. This project is at a critical juncture, and we want to do everything we can to avoid delays on that. Recently, Mark Town retired from the city as the Director of Community Development. Based upon his years of experience in Thousand Oaks and his knowledge and past council support and advice, he would be a good person for the Community Development Department to rely upon to help bring the general plan update project to final decision point with the council. However, state law limits the city's ability to hire retirees in the California Public Employees Retirement System. In order to do this, there are limitations that have to be done. They have to have a specific duration. There's a limit on the number of hours they can, can work, and there's limitations on their, on the pay that the city can provide to them. One of the requirements is that they have to wait six months unless the city council approves the appointment. And it is for this reason that we're here this evening. The Community Development Director, Mr. Parker, has indicated that he would like to bring Mr. Town back to help lead the general plan project. Mr. Town has indicated that he is willing to help with that project. The desire is to have the council approve the appointment and to allow that to be made at this point in time. If, if that is approved, Mr. Town would be brought back as a retired and new tenant, as a part-time employee. Under the terms of that, his appointment would be limited exclusively to the general plan project and would cease when the city council votes on the adoption of the general plan. So the, the request at this point in time is for the council to approve the appointment of Mark Town as a retired and new tenant hourly employee and to authorize the expenditure for that, for that appointment. Staff's available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Giles. Did you have to twist his arm to come back?
Well, I, Madam Mayor, if I might just add one, one note onto that, as I've talked to some of you individually, whenever we have short-term things, shifts and changes, we always try to be as creative and flexible as we can be at determining how we can continue to move key initiatives forward. And so because of COVID, Mr. Town hasn't departed from Costa Rica yet, so we had an opportunity to have a conversation. He's, he's remained very aware of what's happening, and I was appreciative of his willingness to, to consider this appointment. Also, just wanted to echo Mr. Giles' comment that we are sad to lose Michael. He's been a, just a fantastic leader in our Community Development Department, doing great work with our land management system and doing great work with our, with our general plan quarterbacking with those efforts. It's really an indication of the job market as it is right now, and in particular in the planning realm. And so we are a place that a lot of people are going to look for talent, and so we are going to continue to work with the resources that we have, and this is one example of that, so I appreciate your consideration tonight.
Well, I believe that the appointment makes perfect sense. Any comments or questions?
Madam Mayor, I would like to move the recommended action, and I also learned a new word.
You did?
Yeah, I guess that a new attempt is somebody that gets a newer T, is that it?
Ah, okay. All right. Any other questions or comments regarding the motion? Mr. Councilmember McNamie, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. When I came on board as the council member, one of the things I was looking forward to was working with Mr. Town, who decided to retire at the same time I came on board, so I am delighted that he's coming back so I can have an opportunity to work with him and work through many of the projects here. Thank you, Mark.
Excellent, okay. If there are no further comments or questions, I will call for a vote.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones?
Aye.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Engler?
Happily, yes.
And Mayor Bill DeLa Penya?
Yes, indeed.
And that motion carries five zero.
Excellent, and for our next item, we go to our city manager Drew Powers.
Thank you so much, Mayor Bill DeLa Penya. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is, is coming up, two weeks from tonight on the twenty, confirming that.
Twenty seventh?
Twenty seventh of, of April. And right now, the agenda is still being finalized for the twenty seventh, but we do know we're likely to have a couple of smaller pre-screens, one that's coming forth from Amgen, the property on the freeway that we've, we've spoken about sometimes, and then potentially some on Moody Court. But as I said, agenda's still taking shape for that, that evening. With that, I will hand it back to.
Thank you very much, and we will actually go into closed session. And before we adjourn, I will turn it over to Ms. Noonan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two closed sessions tonight. First one is conference with legal counsel on pending litigation for the claims of Christopher Breo and Rochelle Bishop pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D two. And the second one is also conference with legal counsel for existing litigation, Blanca Soto versus City of Thousand Oaks pursuant to Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine A. It is unlikely I will have anything to report following the, the closed session.
Thank you very much, and with that, our meeting is adjourned until April twenty seventh. Good night.